Good afternoon. I'd like to call this Wednesday, July 6th, Board of Supervisor Regular Meeting to order. I will say at this time that Supervisor Whitson has sent me an email electronic participation for the July 6th Board meeting. He's writing to notify that he will participate electronically in today's regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Please note that he is participating electronically for a personal reason, which is allowed by state code and the Board's electronic meeting policy. For the record, he will be joining the meeting from the city of Prague in the Czech Republic. Now, if everyone would please stand, we'll pledge allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In a moment of silence. Thank you. This time I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No. Though, when you get to the closed meeting, you might want to consider whether you want to enter. If I'm not going to be present and Mr. Goff is not here, I think he told me he was gonna look to see if he could find some in the back film, but you'll have to decide if you want to go into closed meeting without kind of foil counsel with you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we'll move into presentations. Dr. Grimsley.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I trust you had a fun, festive, and relaxing Fourth of July. I know mine was pretty awesome. While the school year has been out for quite some time, our CPS has been bustling with activity. Our June session of summer school was both robust and fun, with nearly 80 students participating in academics, as well as the terrific Thursday Day Camp at Graves Mountain. The second session of summer school, our Fun in the Sun July Camp, will focus on social, emotional activities, team building, financial literacy, and physical activity will also take place at Graves Mountain beginning next week. We have over 100 students participating in this program, with 45 high school students participating as activities as leaders and coaches, as well as camp counselors. The camp should be a great deal of fun, and students will benefit by staying socially connected. Our Pathways Academy wrapped up last week with a luncheon where each of the 21 students who participated gave a brief presentation about how the Pathways Academy benefited them in their journey toward adulthood. Many credited the generous and supportive community for being willing to take them in and show them the ropes of various career pathways. Students learned so much about life readiness skills, such as budget planning, investing, resume writing, interviewing, as well as basic life skill necessities like changing attire and oil in a car, sewing, cooking, shopping on a budget, and dressing professionally. The students were able to meet with so many business owners and career professionals in their own community, and now have a well-established network of people to help them on their academic and career pathway in the future. As one of the students stated at the luncheon, "I still have a lot of questions, but I am so much less scared to face the future knowing I have so many people I can call with my questions." The Pathways Academy was hugely beneficial, and we hope to continue to partner with RAPC and PATH in the future to carry this new program forward. The School Board adopted the new RCPS Comprehensive Plan, The Road to Remarkable, at its regular meeting last month. The new five-year plan outlines the strategies and objectives each of the priority teams identified as areas needed for growth. These six priorities are content knowledge, enhancing academic growth and success for all students while closing achievement gaps, career prep and workplace readiness, providing students authentic experiences to cultivate career and workplace skills, student community engagement, cultivating a welcoming, inclusive school community environment, financial planning, supporting district goals and innovation through leveraging all possible avenues of funding. Many of these strategies were recommended by the work of our SIFT team earlier last year, recruitment and retention, recruiting and retaining a premier workforce dedicated to excellence, and school community general wellness, promoting the academic, physical, mental, and emotional well-being of students, staff, and the community at large. We look forward to your continued partnership and support as our schools take our next steps on the road to remarkable, a reflection of this amazing community in which we are so fortunate to educate our youth. Thank you for all you do to support the children of our community. Do you have any questions for me? Sure, ready.
I happened to run into, was Alexia Morrison involved with the Pathways?
Yes.
I happened to run into her, and she said they had just finished, and she was just gushing about how the experience was and how much the kids have loved it. So, it sounded really exciting. Congratulations on partnering with RAPC for that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
We have a calendar of events coming for August.
Of course you do. Yes, you will, as soon as we nail down everything. I'm working on that right now.
Excellent. Mr. Whitson, anything?
Yeah, my only question was just, and thanks to everyone involved in your comprehensive plan and writing and updating, my basic question is, just off the top of your head, very high level, what if any physical implications might stem from your comprehensive plan that we should keep in mind going forward in the coming years?
That's an excellent question, and a lot of that would be derived from the SIFT plan that was presented at the joint meeting. Quite a bit of those recommendations were continuing to advocate at the state level to really look at that local composite index, and how Rappahannock in particular, as well as only about six or seven other counties, are really impacted negatively with that formula. We also offered many different suggestions for solutions to offset that without hurting too much, like the state coffers, but still making a huge impact on the locality. We also were able to sit with the Jay Lark Committee, which will be reporting this December, which is awesome that we had even a seat at that table to make those recommendations based on that report. So, I'm sure we will be looking for some action steps when that report comes to fruition, in which case hopefully we can possibly partner and construct another joint resolution and advocate enrichment to make sure those recommendations hit home in Richmond.
Okay, and then, I guess even more specifically on your comprehensive plan, are there sort of long-term capital projects that have been contemplated that we should keep in mind going forward, or are we not into those kinds of details?
Oh, absolutely, we are. The Capital Improvement Plan is a five-year lookout for all those pieces, preventative maintenance, and also recurring renovation costs. We are very fortunate that we did receive or will be receiving the state aid for the infrastructure and modernization of schools, which is increased to $1 million as a base. So, in that case, that does have huge fiscal implications because now we can condense our five-year Capital Improvement Plan into two. We had hoped to get a lot more done this summer, but because the state took so long to get the budget passed, we had to wait to make sure that the revenue was coming before we could place those orders. And because of the, some of the shortages on materials and supplies getting here, we're gonna have to wait until next summer to do a lot of the big things. But, still, a lot better than five years.
Great, and I think you made clear last time we met that that state funding in no way raises the baseline for ongoing operating expenses that you would force U.S. state funding from county coffers, correct?
Yep.
Doesn't reset your annual budget ask from the county?
Absolutely correct. We anticipated that in our projections when we presented that budget to you, in which case that the revenue, if it were not to make after the General Assembly voted and the governor signed off, all we would have to do is stretch back out our five-year Capital Improvement Plan and reduce those expenses through working with the county. So, no difference.
Great, thanks a lot, thanks for all you do.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question that kind of ties into that somewhat. Wondering about your transportation thoughts.
Yes, so, keeping a very close eye on the fuel costs, definitely, for transportation. We have an agreement with our fuel company where we're just a small margin over what they pay. So, it should stabilize quite a bit, but we had anticipated that in the lines when we projected the budget for increasing costs anyway. So, we should be okay. We should be okay, as long as it doesn't go too much crazier.
You're not thinking about trying to go to electric buses, are you?
Not at this time. The infrastructure that would be required to do that with our fleet seems to outcost the benefit right now.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, next we have public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized when you come up to the mic. Give us your name and your district, and let us know what you're thinking.
Good afternoon, I'm Mark Anderson from the Piedmont District, and I'm here to speak on behalf of reappointing Rick Kohler to the Planning Commission. I've observed it by attending a number of Planning Commission meetings, I think most of you have too. Rick is a calming influence on that body. He's very knowledgeable about the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning ordinances, and applies them impartially to the property owners that come before him and the rest of the commission. He's made a tremendous investment of time in gathering the knowledge he applies, and he is always in the foremost of his mind thinking about conservation, the scenic aspects of the county, and this sort of thing, which is, dare I say, somewhat unusual for a person in the real estate profession. So, he is a real asset to this commission and this county, and I earnestly hope that you will consider reappointing him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Macklin from Jackson District. The first thing I'd like to say is that, for years, there was always a podium up here. So, when people came before the board, and they did have papers with them, whatever, there was someplace they could put them, so if they had to go through them. And if you could possibly find that podium, which I'm sure is in the building someplace, it would be much appreciated by a lot of people, I think. But what I'd like to talk about today is the Planning Commission appointments. And at first, I wanted to go over what happened last month because from what I can get from the available information, you had three candidates for the position. But looking at your policy, which you have on making these appointments, that's Policy 810, which Mr. Curry wanted to bring it up so you could follow along, because I was gonna go through some of the, you did not conform to the policy when you made the appointment last month. And I just wanted to show you where that was. Anyways, the policy has to do with the exact procedures for doing the appointments. And there's policy involved in it, procedure. When you get down to advertising, I found, what I think I've found a problem there is that the position is supposed to be advertised on the county website, or Board docs, and local email servers, and/or social media, and the local newspaper. Well, I went on the county website, and I have not been able to find anything concerning that vacancy on the county website. It was advertised in the paper correctly for that particular meeting. But also, in the procedure, that's under advertising, but then when you get over to the other side, the application process, and the applicants need to bring you a complete application. And in the applications I'm looking at, Ms. Ishii, her application was complete. And there's one key part of this that is the issue. It says, down at the bottom after the printed name, it says dated submittal signature. And on hers, it's Mary Kay Ishii, 5/24/2022. Her application was signed. Also on these applications, they have to be filed in a timely fashion in that on your June meeting, the applications couldn't be accepted after the Tuesday preceding that meeting. So, the next, this is where you need the podium. Okay, Lisa Jones was also an applicant. And hers is all correct, and dated submittal signature, and her name's signed on there, and the date for the submission is 6/5/22. Your meeting was on the 6th, so that was the day before the meeting. So, that application should not even have been considered because it didn't meet the requirements in 810. The last application was Mr. Sisk's, and on his submittal signature, there is a signature, but there's no date. And that's how you verify that meets the filing criterion, which has to be the Tuesday before the Monday meeting. So, basically, his application should not have been accepted because it didn't have the required information on it. So, there is also, in your policy, a way to get around this. And that is, at the very end, it states that you can overlook the requirements of the policy. But, in order to do so, you have to, there has to be a motion made and seconded and voted upon in order to do that. And I don't believe that was done. I would have tried to check the minutes on the meeting, but the way the minutes go in your meetings now, it'll be several months before I could, you know, see what actually happened at the meeting. So, I, really, I question the validity of the appointment because it did not meet these standards that you have established. And you established them, it wasn't that long ago, it was November of 2019. And I believe before that time, there had been some problems with the procedures on the applications or whatever. And I think it was Mr. Curry that actually wrote this up, recommended it be wrote up to make sure everybody's on the same plane. Yet, you didn't follow it. Now, today's application for Jackson District, I'm in favor, I support Mr. Kohler. I think he's done his job on the board and deserves to be reappointed. He comes to meetings well-prepared. But, the way this one is advertised, this is based on your procedures, is that when you postponed the application process on this position back in June, you moved the approximate date, or the date, and therefore, it needed to be read advertised. Because that was, my understanding on the reason for not making the appointment was that you didn't have any application, enough applications, you were the only one that applied. So, I looked in the papers for June, there was no advertising for the position. And the policy clearly states that it has to be published twice during the month, in the month preceding when the appointment is made. That's in your policy. So, I don't see today how you can even take action on that because you haven't followed the policy on that end. And also, on Mr. Atkins' submittal, he too did not foot a date on the submittal signature. So, we have no idea when his application was actually submitted, and that's according to the policy, has to be noted. That's why the submittal date is on there, so that you can look at the policy and go, okay, he submitted it in time. So, today, I'm not sure how you're gonna be able to handle that unless you wanna take a vote to suspend the policy, and then you can move forward on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the courthouse? Yes, ma'am?
Better late than never. Couple of vagrant thoughts.
Naaman District, sorry.
Sorry, you're so used to it. Anita Ramos, Hampton District.
Thank you.
National Geographic does a web, an email program to their subscribers. And not too long ago, couple of days ago, they did an article called "Dark Sky Tourism is on the Rise." And in that, they said 80% of Americans cannot see the Milky Way anymore. We gotta remember that we're one of those rare places around here that you can see the Milky Way. And let's not miss out on that opportunity to get the tourists to come here. Number two, Sperryville and a particular brewery got mentioned in the Washington Post not too long ago in a positive way about people coming out to see lovely Rappahannock County. I hope we see more of those kind of little mentions in papers and such. And last, but not least, being I spend a lot of time in Fairfax County, and I have to pay some taxes there, the recent real estate tax relief article that they put in every single one of their tax notices. I'm gonna give this to you because I know you and I have a hope that we can make some changes here in Rappahannock County to help low-income property owners.
Thank you, Anita.
That's it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Please hold.
I'm gonna take a recess.
Okay. Sorry, folks, we're gonna have to recess for hopefully five minutes. We're having technical difficulty. All right, everyone, we'll get started again. Sorry about the interruption, but technology has fun every now and then. We are still at public comment. You good? Anyone else in the courtroom wishing to speak? We don't know who visitor is. So, anyone on Zoom wishing to speak during public comment? Not seeing any hands raised, I will close public comment. Next, we have the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Time moves.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Whitson, just checking, you can still hear?
Yeah, I can hear.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on to the section on appointments.
Have you heard all the public comment? Okay.
We have Ag and Forester. I don't think you had anybody that...
Still have not received any applications.
Rappahannock County Recreational Facilities Authority.
Still on applications. We still have a spot open. Robert Yaw was the chair, he's gone. Missy will be stepping in as chair for now. If anybody knows anybody who would like to volunteer some of their time.
Any particular skill set that would be great?
You know, I think that right now, it's kind of just sort of refocusing and kind of, there's some just basic stuff that we're just kind of trying to prioritize. So, you know, anybody that kind of, I guess, just is organizationally adept would be great, I guess.
Is there much going on with the playground? Because I know at one point, there was a lot of concern about the pirate ships. And it would be great if somebody with, you know, contractor-type skills would volunteer. It seemed like that would be great.
Contractor skills are always a big, huge plus, considering we need to get the fence finished.
Yeah.
And we just got the mulch down. And thank you to Roger for coming up with this tractor and yanking that huge piece of concrete up, anyways.
That's great.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
That's amazing.
All right, appointments to the Planning Commission.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board. At this time, I'd like to put the name of Tommy Atkins. He lives on Main Street, Amosville. Put his name in motion for appointment to the Planning Commission.
A motion. One second, sir.
We have a motion and a second. If you're in agreement, Mr. Fraser, I got some feedback on past appointments that we didn't, the Board didn't get to speak to the people that actually applied. So, if Mr. Atkins wants to come up and speak before the vote is taken.
Sure, if he would like.
Good afternoon, my name is Tommy Atkins. I'm from the Jackson District. And yes, I have applied for the Planning Commission job. I think that I'm well-qualified. I've lived, I was born and raised in this county, in Sperryville, Virginia. I'm 75 years old plus. I've lived here my entire life. I know a lot about the history of this county. And now, I want to come forward, and I wanna give back to the county. I think I have a lot of knowledge and skills that I can, that can be used. And I'm looking forward to being appointed to the Planning Commission because it is a very important job. It is a very important commission. And I know that the Planning Commission has had a lot to say in the past history of the shaping of our county. Present day, it's important. And most important, the future. They have, they will have a big part in the shaping of our county. And I truly would like to see our county remain primarily agricultural. And I do think that, you know, that I, again, I do have the skills and the knowledge. I've had 44 years of service with VDOT. And I've also had 30 years of service with the US Army, Army Reserve. Not full-time, of course, a lot of inactive time, reserve time. And I was in administrative positions in the most of my time with VDOT. And also, I was retired as a company First Sergeant in Army Military Reserve. So, I think I'm well-qualified. And I've asked y'all's support in giving me the opportunity to use those skills to help make, or contribute toward making our county a better place for mainly the people of our county to live in. And I would really like to see it made aware that our young people that are born and raised in this county, that they have an opportunity, that they can remain in this county, and they can look to forward owning property and having a house and a home in this county. And that's one of my goals that I would like to strive to see take place in this county. I thank you, and I guess may the best person win.
Tommy, I don't know if the Board has any comments that they'd like to, or questions that they have for you.
Mr. Atkins, I'd like to thank you for taking my phone call yesterday. Thanks for having a chat with me, I appreciate it.
Anytime, you know, I do have,
To the mic.
I am committed to put, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I am committed to putting in the time. I know it's gonna take a lot of time in this position. And I am committed to doing that, so. Thank you.
I appreciate your time the other day as well on the Fourth of July event. I'm just wondering, the one question I have, because I don't think the Planning Commission has made this a requirement or not, but if they were to move forward with the Planning Commissioner's certification and push to have everybody certified, would you be willing to go through that program?
Most definitely.
I asked him at the very beginning a month ago, and he told me that he would do it. And I'm pretty sure he'll do it. Especially if we pay for it.
Yes, that helps. Mr. Whitson, anything?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, as you know, I'm currently Chair of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission. And however this goes, I do wanna acknowledge, and I've heard from a lot of people who echo my sentiment, acknowledge Mr. Kohler's great contributions to the Planning Commission over the course of the last four years. I think everyone agrees. He does a lot of work, and we all benefit from that. And I think really the tradition on the... And I think really the tradition on the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors, at least as long as I've been around, is each county supervisor chooses a preferred candidate. I know Ms. Donahue, you selected a candidate who I supported, and Ms. Smith, you selected a candidate who I supported, and you all supported, my reappointment, Mr. Henry. So with that, I also want to thank Mr. Atkins for stepping up. As I told him on the telephone the other day, we had a very nice chat, Mr. Atkins, and I probably don't always agree on everything, but we've had some spirited discussions over the course of the last year or so, and I like him a lot. And I think Ms. Donahue makes a great point about training. I think we all could benefit from that on the planning commission, to the extent some people have not gone through that training. So if Mr. Atkins is appointed today, I certainly will do my part to make sure that he and I and anyone else willing and able to take advantage of the training that we all do, because we owe that to the citizens of Rappahannock County. So, Mr. Atkins, thank you, thank you for submitting your application, and again, for taking my phone call the other day.
You're certainly welcome.
Thank you. All right, we have a...
Can you hear from Rappahannock?
I think I would like to do that. Yep. And I know this may be out of procedure, I don't know. I think it would make sense to have Mr. Kohler have the ability to speak before the vote is taken. Mr. Kohler, would you like to speak? Your option.
I mean, I just want to say for the record, kind of a point of order, that last month, all the folks that were appointees also had an option to speak, but they were asked to speak during the public comment period, and it was made clear at the outset of the meeting that that would be the only opportunity to speak in the course of the meeting. So I don't certainly have any problem with doing it this way this month, but I do think we should logically follow doing it one way one month and the same way the next month, rather than one way one month and one way another month.
I totally agree.
Because I just think that's fair, that everyone has an expectation of when they'll be heard, and both the applicants and the board will be able to plan accordingly. Thank you. I'm so sorry, that was a very long point of order.
Rick Kohler, Jackson District. I served last four years on the commission. I wanted to give back to the county, just as Mr. Atkins has said. I think it's an important thing for citizens to step up, and I'm glad he's stepping up. Thank you, sir. And I'm willing to step up, too. I'm willing to continue. I have good, good knowledge of zoning and real estate and what's required in this planning commission agendas that come up. I helped on the, write Chapter Seven and part of Chapter Six, as I recall. But in the end, you know, it's the board's choice, and I'm happy to serve if you'll have me. You know, that's, thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I think you were on the planning commission during my stint on the planning commission, and I always enjoyed serving with you, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Any else? Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Mr. Whitson.
Yeah, and I just want to thank Mr. Kohler for taking my phone call and having a very productive chat a little while ago, and to thank you again for your service the last four years. I've really enjoyed working with you.
Thank you.
So, and I would just like to echo what Ms. Smith was saying before, is that I feel as though this process should be done the same way every time, and I feel as though that a lot of this could happen in sort of what would just happen right now, where we have a sort of a Q and A in public, and I feel like it would benefit the process wholly. We have, last month, we had a candidate who was on, who wanted to stay on. Mr. Kohler wants to stay on, both of which have done a massive amount of work. The previous one, Mrs. Ishi, we are literally going to go over something that she spearheaded today. And I just think it would benefit the public to know why horses are being switched midstream. And this has nothing to do about a candidate, this is not an open seat. Now, while it's the prerogative to pick a candidate and for us to support it traditionally, I think that, I mean, I agree with you, Ms. Smith, that we should, I think that we should have some kind of Q and A. I think that if we can have the applicant at least address the public, address us, we can ask questions, moving forward, I think that it could only be beneficial in terms of just transparency and sunlight.
I don't have any problem with that. Of course, that's fairly new to this body or this county, but I think that we should try to strive to not make it look like a popularity contest to make these appointments, especially for planning and zoning.
I agree.
The way that the General Assembly and their intimate wisdom, and sometimes I say that mockingly, but they have set up a situation for planning and zoning where it is supposed to be apolitical. We are the political body in the county, and for all practical purposes, we really are the popularity contest. So I think that's where it ends, and we try to pick people that will do the heavy lifting and stuff like planning and zoning and not have to worry about the popularity part of it. Obviously, they should be people that get along with, you know, their neighbors, that type of thing, but I don't think that we should be running contests. And I'd just like to see Rappahannock County, I don't know exactly when it started, how it started, but we went there, and no county around us runs popularity contests for planning and zoning.
I agree. I just wish that the conversation that I had had with Mr. Atkins yesterday for the first time could have been had in public, because we had a really, a great conversation for, you know, 10, 20 minutes. And I just feel like it would benefit my constituents to hear that, to have it on public record.
Sure.
That's it. I agree with you. I don't, I want to depolitize the conversation.
I do, I just, it's a new concept for us, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be doing it.
Well, just food for thought, I suppose.
It is, it's something to think about.
I reached out to Mr. Curry before the meeting just to see if there was precedent or anything on how these applicants, what order they get to speak in or any of that. And I really didn't like the public comment period because we don't have a question-and-answer period at public comment, so that would be going against that rule. So if we do it in this order for any applicants moving forward, and they know that we are going to have a Q and A, basically, at the application period, appointment period, then I think everybody knows what to expect, and we're ready for it as well.
It just should be the same for everyone, because I'm afraid it's going to turn into pop quiz or...
I agree with that.
I mean, some people, you know, everybody brings different strengths to their jobs, and some people are faster on their feet than others, and really, bottom line for me, this is probably the most important appointment that we as board members will make. And we don't necessarily appoint that individual for the way they may answer questions on a certain day. We may appoint them, given that we know their behaviors, or their sensibilities, or their commitment to the county, and to base it all on a public comment or a Q and A in the course of one meeting, I think it's an intake of information and an opportunity for folks to learn more. But I do very much appreciate that my appointees on the planning commission, I feel like they're my agents on that commission, and that, to me, is a harmonious agreement. And I mean, I haven't always had my appointee put through in the past, not by members of this board, and it's not good. I would hope we would avoid that and continue to put through folks that serve for the agents of the, of the members that are elected on this body.
What that had had a residual effect of keeping people, I think, from coming forward for other appointments, when it became a popularity contest here in the meeting. And I think we lose a lot that way, because obviously, if you've got two or three people that apply for something, especially an open seat, only one person can be appointed. But when you've got an elected member of that district that puts a name forward and then they can't get appointed, it really stifles the process.
Yeah, I don't think creating a hot seat is the way to go. I just think that, because we have the, a natural reaction to want to ask questions.
Sure.
And that's all I'm trying to facilitate. Because I mean, I 100% agree with you, this process needs to be depolitized. So whatever way we can do that, by putting sunshine on it, that's what we should do.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Whitson, anything else before we vote?
No, ma'am, thank you.
I'd just like to clarify the motion. There was a recommended action, which was to move to a point blank to the planning commission representing the Jackson District with a term ending July 2nd, 2026. Mr. Fraser, if you think it's reasonable, you could tack on to that, into that, to waive any informalities in this or past appointments.
I'm sorry?
Waive any informalities in this or past appointments?
Maladies, yeah.
Talking about the incorrect date of the application.
Whether his application was signed or not, or dated or not.
I think those are guidelines more than an order, a procedural order.
They were adopted by motion, they can be adjusted by motion anytime the board wants.
I modify my motion to accept that language.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This isn't roll call, right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
You have one vacancy on the library board, noticed it run in the newspaper. This was due to resignation, person moving out of town, so have not received any applications. I know it was in the Jackson.
I'm still working on one for Jackson.
Not that you do it by district, but you might want to try to keep balance, so keep looking.
I got sidelined a little bit the last couple of weeks.
Next is regarding the Water and Sewer Authority. There is one vacancy, you filled one of the spots at your last meeting. As noted earlier, policy suggests that this be noticed in the newspaper. That would happen this month. However, you do have an applicant who applied previously, Mr. Ken Reed. He has a background in water and sewer. So if the board is inclined to appoint Mr. Reed, then you can do so and waive the requirements to advertise in the newspaper, or you can hold off and I'll place that notice in the newspaper this month, and then you can take another shot at making an appointment in August. These terms end in July 31st.
Madam Chairman, if Mr. Reed is present today, first to hear from him?
No.
If he's not, I can say that he's one of my constituents. I said many times, I served on Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority board. He's extremely, extremely well-qualified. I think the Sewer Authority is doing great work. I want to thank, I want to thank Heather Wick for her awesome contributions to that board, and I think we've got an equally well-qualified candidate here who we should pass up. And so in making a motion to appoint him, I suggest we also waive the advertising requirement and just make that appointment today. So my motion is to appoint Mr. Reed to the Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Are we going to include waiving any other...
Yeah.
Formalities in this?
Do you want to waive any informalities in the application?
Yes, yes, sir. That's where we're headed today, so yes.
Any other discussion?
I would just echo what Mr. Whitson has said. Heather Wick gave me a wonderful tour of the Sewer Authority with enthusiasm and a real education that you would maybe not expect when you go to tour your local Sewer Authority. She really had a great faith in what was going on there and was able to explain it and give a great tour, and I know she's very, very involved with the authority, and so I just wanted to also thank her for her service. And thank you, Mr. Ring, for throwing his hat in again for this application, for this appointment. I know he'll be a great asset on the authority, and again, it's an embarrassment of riches in Piedmont District and the folks that come forward to volunteer for us. So thank you both very much.
And I will just clarify, I can clarify or expand my motion that this is for a four-year term ending, I believe, July 31st, 2026.
Correct.
Thank you for that. Van, are you okay with that amendment?
Oh, yes.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Water Resource Protection and Monitoring.
A quick update on the discussion with Mr. White from DQ regarding the Climate Response Network well. He's, as he continues to dig into the process, he's learned that, and the county would have to grant an easement to the state for the location of the well, as well as an easement to access the well. If it were to be placed next to the tower in the location that's shown in the attached report, there's already an access easement for the homes in that area down that little strip driveway, and so I would imagine it's not much of an encumbrance on the county to grant, extend that easement to the state. And if you want this well to happen, then you will have to grant an easement around the location. Well, he still did not have the language, but I told him I would bring this information to the board, and if there was an objection to an easement, then we could turn it off now, otherwise he'll continue working on the paperwork and we'll bring it back to the board at a later time.
Can we refer this to the easement, to the building committee? And have you, unless you guys would feel right now that you just don't want it?
The building committee talked about it briefly, the location. I think Ms. Smith was...
We just talked about the, hopefully, you know, to see that it was outside the area that we might be working in later with the other projects, but, I mean, I personally, I'm fine with going ahead with it now, because I think if we've already got an encumbrance on the property, we'd better to have all of it over here than it would be to do something at the Volfield that may preclude us from doing some work over there later on.
Right. So I suggested that they can work, if they worked with RACI to prepare the plat, they already have all the survey done anyway from the work they did with us.
So is this your, this whole thing would be the easement?
That's approximate area of access easement, and then the area around the well would be smaller for the permanent easement. They need a bigger area to be able to get the trucks in to put the well in, and then once it's in, then the permanent easement would be not too big.
So you just need the...
Yeah, well, just, there's no objection. I'll talk to Mr. White and let him know to keep working on it. As you can imagine, there's a bureaucratic process with the state to do such a thing.
Never. Referrals to Rules Committee.
This was just a follow-up from the last meeting. Ms. Smith asked to have a formal referral. I kind of thought it was done at the last meeting. I listened to the audio, and it's not clear, so...
I just wanted to make sure everybody felt they had a chance to give me feedback or input on a finance plan for the county and developing that policy, and if it's okay with everyone, we'll go ahead and start working on that on the Rules Committee.
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Any motion?
Yeah, as long as everyone's in agreement, I think it's fine. I know it was new last month, so I just wanted to give everyone a chance to chew on it. And of course, send along anything that you may think would be helpful or that you prefer the language of.
I am hopeful, we haven't set a date, but that we'll have a off-site for Strategic Plan, Mission and Vision work site or work day, and I don't know if that will, I don't want your work to be changed if we come up with something in that strategy session.
I'm sure it'll work out.
An off-site meeting?
Don't waste your time, yeah. Yes, sir.
Yeah, good. Could I make a request that we not do it at a winery?
Can. Thank you. And we don't even have a timeline yet, but I'm thinking it'll probably be October. All right, new business, O3 hairs.
Yes, this agenda item has been kind of pushed out month after month after month, not aware to the board, but to me... month after month after month, not aware to the board, but to me, the regional collaboration of Falkir, Culpepper and Rappahannock, commonly referred to among ourselves with the radio system as FCR Group and L3 Harris, worked together to purchase a radio system jointly. And within the proposal, there was a master services agreement that spoke to how the system was going to be maintained jointly after the warranty expired. That warranty actually expired June 30th. And this services agreement includes the pricing for the annual maintenance, as well as the terms and conditions that go along with that. There's been a lot of work in reviewing the details of those terms and conditions. And ultimately, the county's tasked Federal Engineering, the consultant that worked with the county on the counties on this project, to go through it in great detail. And there was a lot of back and forth with L3 Harris, Falkir really led that, that effort. And so the version of the master services agreement that is before you, Rev. 4, and signed by L3 Harris, is the product of Federal Engineering's input and is found to be acceptable by Falkir and Culpepper. On a parallel path, there's really no formal formality to how the three counties work together on the regional asset that's jointly owned. When I was in such a system in Hampton Roads, where we had three counties in the same sort of situation, there was a memorandum of understanding that at least generally spoke about how the counties would work together on the system and how there would have to be some mutual understanding of moving forward. So to that end, there's a MOU also attached to this agenda item that is very general, but does put some teeth into how the three counties are going to work together and identifies that there would be a policy team comprised of the three main points of contact, Mr. Polster would be ours, to speak about the day-to-day operation of the system, just so there's focus and attention. It also states that we agreed to split the funding of the maintenance on the same percentages that we split the capital. Fifty Falkir, forty percent Culpepper and ten percent Rappahannock.
Just for my identification, real quick, can, how did you guys come up with that?
I have no idea. Long before my time.
What was the question?
How they had come up with the numbers, the funding breakup?
Fifty, forty, ten.
Oh, yeah, that, that was done before our board even had any involvement in it at all. But they, they figured that with, I guess, the number of radios and the population, somehow they came up with a fifty, forty, ten.
My last locality was forty, forty, twenty, and I was the twenty. And people were a little bit offset that we were the small twenty. And my retort always was, so I'd rather be a smaller number than a bigger number. It still takes kind of two of us to carry the day in a boat. So let's keep the number as small as possible and we'll pay that percentage. So, because nobody's over fifty by themselves.
Right.
So I suspect that this document be modified over time. It's as flexible as it can be while putting some structure to the relationship. What I'm asking the board today is authorization for me to sign both of these documents after county attorney finds them provable as to form, legal form.
Where did the MOU come from?
It was, it started from a draft of the regional MOU that I had for my last three-county system. And then now Sheriff Falls took the lead in basically removing a lot of stuff and making it a little more general.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion to move to authorize the county administrator to sign the provided MOU and master services agreement documents.
I'll, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
I would just ask that be amended to include the very important step of after review and approval by the county attorney.
Yes, I'll make that amendment.
Mr. Whitson, you okay with that amendment?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
What I didn't say, I think, is in the narrative that your budget includes the amount of money that's, we've known about this for a long time.
Thank you. Recognition of Retirement, Lauren May, too bad she's not here.
Well, I spoke with Lauren and told her that I didn't expect any sort of presentation. And next month, you will have your service awards for longevity. Even though she's retired, she will have her five years, so maybe you can formally present the signed letter into her at the next meeting, if you're so inclined to authorize this letter to be signed.
So I need a?
Yep, I'll move to authorize the chair to sign the letter recognizing Ms. Lauren May for her five-plus years of service to the county.
You?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? You're none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Hey, now we need to convene the broadband authority?
Yes, if you could just, as the chair, you can bring the body to order, I believe.
All right, I will bring the Rappahannock County Broadband Authority to order.
Three o'clock?
Yes, sir. Moving right along. And the, the discussion about the PANDEC?
Yeah, there's one invoice that was scheduled for payment that is attached that would have to be approved by the broadband authority for payment. That is shown on the screen, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
I move that we authorize payment of that invoice.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Mr. Carney beat ya.
Come on, that's not fair.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 I've got a time delay here, Mr. Carney, you beat me to it.
Thank you.
That's true. And just to be clear, that, as your role as broadband authority members, you may took that action. Then just as a way of update, I have attached the final executed fiscal agent agreement with all counties and the commission to the agenda, as well as the monthly reports that Ms. Nick provided to me last week. Normally, these are a little delayed by the time they get to the broadband authority because she does them at the end of the month and your meeting is a couple of weeks later. I did speak with, or exchanged emails with Mr. Davis last week. And they are waiting and believe any day they should have the executed agreements from the state. But they keep getting pushed off. They thought perhaps it was because of budget delay, they didn't, they don't really know. And I don't have anything else in the way of an update for the overall project.
There's no other discussion, we can adjourn the broadband authority?
I move second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Three oh two, shortest broadband meeting ever.
Ever.
Thank you, Margaret.
Yes. Thank you, Margaret. Moving into information, reports and correspondence, board committee reports, building committee.
Building committee, the building committee met last week, Thursday, I believe it was. And we had a three members present, physically present, and we had one member electronically. We also had Mr. Randy Vaughn and one of his assistants, though I don't remember her ever speaking.
Very briefly, I think she was mostly showing her screen.
Yeah, anyway, from Wiley Wilson, and she did, and I was talking about just briefly, the meeting started, so I, I didn't get too detailed. But she's an architectural graduate, I believe, working with Wiley Wilson. And she has started putting 3D visuals to what we have been working with and what has been presented to the board so far. And it, and it's good, of course, it's hard to get a, you know, get your arms around it and look at it. But with the 3D concept, you can actually see how the building may be situated on the property, how it may you know, the scale, how it would scale with the current buildings we have. One of the last things we want to do, I think, is to come forward with a, a plan to show the public that shows this building being diminished somewhat by a, you know, new, larger courthouse building. So, and, and then how it would appear from, from the street out there. So that's what we, we worked on and discussed a couple of different variables on that. So they're going to be working on something that they can present to the board a little bit later, or, or we would jointly. And we're not making a whole lot of progress right now on current building renovations.
We're working through procurement.
Working through procurement.
Very exciting.
We're trying to figure out how to do it fast and cheap. And it ain't really possible to do anything fast.
But only with the people that we, the, only with experts that we trust.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Putting all that together can be complicated.
No such thing as fast and cheap. And, and then like Mr. Curry said, working with people that we have somewhat established relationships with that we know can do the work. Trying to work through that process.
Right the first time, yeah.
Easy to do it cheap.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Recreational Facilities Authority?
Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier, we are still looking for somebody for the board and authority. And Ms. Smith brought up the pirate ship, which is kind of an ongoing thing. We had Mr. Ken Estes made a really, really generous donation of some mulch to finally get mulch around the swings and the playground. And it's just desperately needed, it's just bare ground. And so we're kind of just starting to, just sort of reassess and prioritize some safety issues around the playground, which are heavily used by little kids and kids and whatever. So it's, it's, it's going well there, and I just wanted to mention again to thank you to Roger for pulling up that huge piece of concrete finally. I think Ricky was supposed to have, he knew about it, maybe he could know now that it's gone. But thank you, Roger, and thank you, Janie, for, for facility. That's where we are with that.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, we did meet on the 7th of June. There were some general updates with, on fire and rescue. We talked a little bit about the winter storm review, and it sounded that people were not comfortable in congregated settings, so.
What, with COVID, congregate is been problematic?
Yes, so that was one of the reasons that the areas that we set up weren't, shouldn't have a lot of people coming in. They were worried about the group of people. Fire and Rescue Quarterly Data Review was done, the insurance shift happened July 1, I think, or?
July 1 for VACOR, but July 19, the VFIS will switch from the one broker over straight to VFIS. Would really add any major changes. And then over the next policy year, we'll be working with the companies to try to make those more efficient. We, we have standardized a few of the policies, like the, the, what was the theft or what is it? Can't think of the name of the policy, but where each company had different levels of coverage. And so that's all been aligned to be the same for this new policy year. But we haven't combined policies or any of that that we've talked about that would be more efficient, I think, in operation and in funding. That's a slower process to make sure we have full buy-in.
And Mr. Polster mentioned that they were looking at the five-year plan and trying to figure out how to put that meeting together and facilitator, and I don't know what's happened since that conversation. And that the chase buddy is about right at the number of staff?
They're pretty much staffed every day. There's a few gaps. On 4th of July, there was actually one of your paramedics at the facility assisting the volunteer crew. And then you had a person on duty that day.
All right, that's all I had for the Public Safety Committee, Rules Committee.
Didn't meet.
Timing on that was great. Planning Commission update?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Whitson. We met on June 15th, and we had, we had a meeting of public hearing, had a tourist home application from a couple, sir named Stunney Young, and this is appropriate, I think Ms. Smith in particular knows well in Old Hollow with a neighbor directly adjacent to it. And after conferring with Mr. Curry and Mr. Goff, at least my objection, I put that to as. We didn't move forward and leave unanimously or close to unanimously to send it on to the Board of Southern Fields with recommendation for approval, but with a very long list, probably a dozen items and conditions that hopefully will result in peace and quiet for the neighbors. So I think it was a pretty good exercise. The applicants were extremely deferential to the neighbors and offered to do everything possible to make it work. So I think it was, and we had a good process and hopefully, hopefully it will go smoothly going forward. We had a preliminary review of another tourist home application from a woman by last name Miss Erby, and that is inspired by my students, relatively straightforward, dedicated, laying up to the home and no objection from any neighbors at all. And so we moved that on to the Board of Southern Fields, with no recommendation. You might recall colleagues, work colleagues, that with some urgency, we referred to the Planning Commission language to amend the zoning ordinance regarding vehicle access to events. And we had a preliminary and I think robust discussion regarding that draft. And everyone had a lot of good input. And so what I would like to do sooner rather than later is schedule a standalone work session of the Planning Commission to dive back into that, because people raised questions about different types of events, the potential adverse effect that the current drafts, if implemented in our ordinance, might have on, or might, it might lead to unintended consequences. But I think the good news for all of us on Board of Supervisors is that the members of Planning Commission were unanimous in their agreement that we do need to adopt something and that it needs to be adopted with some urgency. It's just a matter of working out some of the details to minimize unintended consequences. So I was very, very grateful for all the thoughtful input from the members of the Planning Commission in this regard. And then as part of a future work session, hopefully in the coming weeks or month, we also will be looking more closely at the Berkeley Group Diagnostic Report, which we, we have not yet heard about on Board of Supervisors, so that might come after our board review of it or perhaps precede it, but that's something I will wrestle with on the Planning Commission. So yeah, it was a really, it was a very productive meeting, as usual, a number of reviews and public hearings. And we'll be talking about this notion of Planning Commission preliminary reviews later, as a part of one of our public hearings. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Fire-loving board.
We did not meet, we had tentatively set a date for June, but I reached out to the chair and he said that we shall meet hopefully in September to talk about a category for appropriations for educational recruitment and retention and community outreach, which seems to be, it just needs to be defined a little bit clearer. So hopefully we'll meet in September.
Excellent. All right, reports, do you want to pull up any of the?
I can, you have.
Cash flow and sales tax?
All, all is in favor.
Yes.
Yeah, you can see, as, as we discussed, I think, previously, with the anticipated receipt of the second tranche of the SLFRF ARPA ARPA funds, the cash graph has run flat, that's because you get this big deposit of revenues and your normal expenditure spend rate was absorbed for the most part by that, $700,000. So the big caveat with all these reports, these are not end-of-fiscal-year reports. There's a fair amount of accruals that will, dollars that are spent in July and August for goods that were received in June that will have to be brought back from accounting purposes. And there may be revenues that are brought back too because they're related to earlier, like sales tax. And there may still be some stuff from the beginning of the fiscal year that needs to be actually, was already pulled out, but are. was already pulled out, but our accounting software doesn't take credit for that, so.
So, Mr. Curry, if you, just looking at the end of the fiscal year, compared to the end of the 21 fiscal year, if we back out the assigned portion of the ARPA funds, doesn't that still show us a spread between 21 and 22 that, I'm just trying to do the math here quickly, still about, still close to $700,000 better off, I'm setting aside the ARPA cash infusion, is that about right?
Yeah, generally, there is, you will have added to the fund balance, you've been tracking your sales tax revenues, which are shown on a different chart here, and they vastly exceeded budget, so yes, your revenues will exceed your expenditures during this current fiscal year. Sooner or later, that's going to come into focus. You are sitting on nearly all of your ARPA funds, $1.4 million in the bank, so while they're not fully restricted in what you can spend them on, you've committed a fair amount of that. And so even though it kind of looks like you have a lot of money sitting there, some of it is committed.
Sales tax?
Yeah, I think sales tax is an interesting look, and you can see, this is one of the first months in a while that we may have starting to catch up to the rapid growth that happened over the last few years, and we're not seeing, didn't see a huge month over, year-over-year increase for the same month. This, we're $83,959 this year versus $82,866 last year. So we may start seeing that, which means your 12-month rolling total, which I've shared before, which is right about $1 million right now, might stabilize in that area for a little bit. And that only increases if we see the year-over-year comparison change for a month. So in line with your expectations for revenue and the budget. Didn't see anything in the revenue reports or the expenditure reports that caused any concern.
Building permit?
That's big, another big report, that office is very busy, has been very busy, not quite as big as last month, but very busy. And that, that's got to end at some point, too.
Yeah. Anything on the VDOT side of things we need to?
No, most people realize that this Main Street, Sperryville, was paved and striped. There is more paving that will be done, I saw an email before I got here with a two-week look ahead for some paving on some other streets, I'll share that when I can, probably not as constricted as Main Street in Sperryville.
All right.
I'd like to mention something there, maybe Mr. Atkins could, could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that VDOT used to do, I would say not much, a much better job, but just a more thorough job of cutting back along the right of ways. And for years, I've been hearing meetings where people complained that they cut too much and that they were destroying the tree canopies and stuff like that, and I, I believe that that is what has led to us having such a tremendous amount of tree damage coming down on roads and power lines here recently, is because 20 or 30 years of trying to keep people happy with this tree canopy has led to trees being where they shouldn't be, or tree limbs.
I know that VDOT will respond and review trees that are right of way, you had one down your way that I think they looked at, and on case by case, of course, with the ash trees have been a big mess.
That was, that was not predictable.
But as with anything, I know just in my time in local government, their funds available for maintenance have not kept up with inflation, and so they're doing things either less or more, with more ingenuity, where maybe before it was contracted, now they might have to do it state forces or vice versa. So the way we were used to having things done, it's maybe not quite as good, but we, we certainly is up to us, you, to reach out to VDOT and make sure that they understand if we have concerns with right-of-way maintenance and, you know, put our two cents in.
Yeah, I guess we're going to have to be louder with that.
Great, thank you. Matters presented by the board?
That was mine.
That was yours? Ms. Smith?
I don't think I have anything.
Carney?
Well, I would just like to say two things, the first is that the Amosville Carnival was incredible, and I took my small children, and it was amazing to get out and see everybody.
I don't want to, you know, toot our own horn, but we have the best fireman's carnival in the county right now.
I tell you what, I went on the Ferris wheel and it gave me a thrill. I mean, so thank you for doing that, and I'd wanted to thank Sperryville Fire and Rescue for a wonderful fireworks display, which was just absolutely incredible. And again, it was the first time my little twin children had seen fireworks and it absolutely blew their mind. And I'd like to thank the Easton family for hosting, it was just absolutely, and the weather was perfect, so. It was a fun-filled weekend for sure, so I just want to thank those folks.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson?
Yeah, Mr. Carney just made me homesick, so thanks for that, but yeah, it sounds like great stuff that's been happening the last few weeks. A couple of things, Mr. Carney was talking about all the generous contributions to the county park in the form of mulch from Mr. Estes and removal of concrete from others. Mr. Carney and I talked very informally several weeks ago, and he might or might not remember, the park is awesome, and I think everyone agrees that it is being more used, between the tennis courts and all the tennis players dedicated and useless facilities, beautiful bathroom. It's become a very attractive place, you know, a lot more used, and I just wanted to plant a seed that I think it would be worthwhile, as we think about our county maintenance team, to figure out how we might be able to professionalize the facilities management side of the park to make sure that we're taking good care of this, what has become a really valuable asset, resource to our county, and I'm not a supporter at all, and so I recognize that immediately people said, well, you want to hire someone to manage our county park, not really, I just wonder if we can't look at park maintenance in the context of broader maintenance plan and team for the county as a whole, so that we're not cobbling together maintenance through always through volunteers. And that's not to take anything away from what everyone does to make the park a great place, but I, I think it's gotten to the point where we have something valuable that we need to take care of properly, so I just put that out there for all my colleagues to think about in the months ahead, and maybe at some point we can have a more in-depth discussion about how we might accomplish that. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing, it occurs to me that we, through the pandemic, we received money from the state that, you know, quote-unquote, forced us to put money into bonuses for sheriff's deputies, and I hate to use the word forced, because I think we all did it with gratitude to the employees and deputies of the sheriff's department. But now that the pandemic is winding down, looking across our county government, we know from the treasurer's office, the commissioner of revenue, the building office, and we've seen the building, the building permanent report, which is mind-blowing in terms of activity in the last year. I want to plant another seed with all of my colleagues, and wondering if we could perhaps hold into the pending Baker utility pay scale study, the consideration of offering county employees a one-time post-pandemic cash bonus for performance and service to the public during the pandemic, during very difficult times. And again, I'm not suggesting any immediate action, but I think it would be appropriate that we consider, as the pay scale studies release this fall, and perhaps we can figure out some kind of bonus plan for, as a bonus for county employees, so that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Whitson, I can address, thank you for bringing it up about the park, we actually had that discussion at our last meeting, and when Ms. Nick presented the budget, there were two line items that we actually combined so that it'd be clear that it was going to be dedicated towards maintenance. They had been in last year, but we just kind of cleaned it up to, to show that, that the intention is there, because the park has been doing it, is to kind of work towards saying, okay, well, hey, what is this actually being used for? So thank you for bringing that up, and I just wanted to let you know that we did have a good, robust conversation about that in terms of the direction of how maintenance should, should be handled. So thank you.
Great, that's good to know, thank you.
The only thing I have came out of the massive storm that we had roll through Warrenton, we were pretty well treated kindly by Mother Nature compared to Marshall and Warrenton, but it made me wonder about our communication, emergency communication protocol within the county. At that time, I don't know of any other communication other than what I found on Facebook, and I would like to have a conversation, I haven't talked to anybody, this is just on the top of my mind from that storm, but I would like to have some sort of communication where we understand what the protocol is for using the RAVE system, and who is in charge of that, and when is it used, and I just would like us all to have a better understanding, because that was a storm that people were hiding in their basements for a reason, and they didn't hear from us, and I'm wondering if they shouldn't have, I mentioned it to Lieutenant Jenkins, and she thought maybe the RAVE system isn't used as frequently as maybe it could be.
It could be used more, and there's a set number of minutes that we have access to. It's something that needs to be carefully considered, and we've, we received complaints when it first went online, when we kind of opted everybody into weather alerts, and they woke up at like 3:00 in the morning when a thunderstorm warning was placed, but maybe it didn't track over their house. And so we backed away from that, and it's opt-in now for that weather alert. But as far as pushing from the county out, we can talk about how best to do that. It's, if we use the landline data, it is supposed to be an emergent concern. Other than that, I don't think we have any restrictions on when, when we push messages out.
I think it's time for a conversation on that.
Sounds great for Public Safety Committee.
Yeah, I was thinking that myself. All right, now we need to make a decision as to whether we're going to go into a closed meeting when we don't have Mr. Goff here.
Madam Chair, if Mr. Goff's not there and Mr. Curry is going to be present for his own review, it might be an abundance of caution that would be postpone this closed session or next regular meeting in August, I'm personally not comfortable going into a closed session without FOIA counsel.
Will you also be, I'm sorry?
For an office, I should say, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, I was going to ask if Mr. Whitson was going to, planning, I mean, of course, last minute things can happen, but were you planning on being at the August meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm almost done here, so. Not almost, but I'll be there, yes.
If there's any other objections, I don't have any problem with that.
It's fine, if you all want to postpone, I think it's.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, I'll second, you made a motion?
Yeah, that's my motion, we postpone the start of this meeting, and I'll be there in person, yeah.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much. All right, recess.